When he was stepping into the parliament way back in 2014, the thing that he did was that he did a done but pranam to the parliament because he said that this in fact is a temple. We are also seeing how you know all those people, almost the all those people who have been coming here for decades, for them, for them too, this is an extremely emotional, emotional moment. So we will see, you know, all the people clicking selfies and also giving their tidbit once the move, the move happens from the old building to the new buildings.
Stay on with me, stay on with me, Ashwarya. So that is the photo session that is taking place presently. Look at all our members of the parliament, from the Lok Sabha to the Rajya Sabha, sitting together for one last time. No fighting here, no fireworks, sitting together, some of them standing of course as dignified members of the parliament. One final photo session. Remember each time either when there is a new government, there are changes, there are often these photo sessions that do take place. And this is with regard to of course a record for the history books. But for one last time at the old parliament building, there is going to be this photograph session after which they are going to move all of them together to the new parliament building, which will hereon be called the Parliament of India. Ashwara, go ahead. So we see all the members of the parliament sitting together for one final photograph session and that will be for the history books. It was constructed during the British era and finally a decision was taken that we need a new parliament that reflects a modern India with modern facilities with a space that can include the increasing numbers of the members as well, have the facilities that caters to modern times. And that perhaps is reflective of the change too, isn't it?
Well, Pooja, you know, you were speaking about the fact that this is a building, you know, which was given to us by the British. Let me tell you that the, the design of the building, the circular design in fact was given a nod way back in 1921. And it took almost seven years for the building to be completed because the inauguration then took place in 1927. So obviously, you know, there is a lot of history behind the old building and this is exactly what the government and prime minister have been speaking about that now is the need to shed our colonial past and make sure that India marches ahead. And this new building, in fact, one of the most important projects within, you know, the changes that we are seeing in central Delhi, this of course was one of the biggest projects, prime minister time and again speaking about the fact that this will become the landmark of new India, India which is ready, India which the world is now saluting.
We are looking at 788 members of the parliament, of the Lok Sabha, the lower house of the parliament, of Rajya Sabha, the upper house of the parliament, standing together. What a proud moment, remember this is for our democracy. Yes, it is a noisy parliament. Yes, there are often a lot of commotion, fireworks and sometimes items thrown at each other too. And that, we do call it a low, but this is what is reflective of a democracy, a vibrant democracy where there are all sorts of opinions that are allowed, that, that take place, that is where our policies are made. The 788 members of the parliament respect, reflecting their respective constituencies, make our policies. We are in some way dependent on them, on these 788 members who define and decide in which direction should our country be moving forward. And bidding goodbye to the old parliament building, a British colonial era building, that has seen us through the independence, through the partition, through many, many decades of developments, changes, highs and lows. And now in 2023, this is the month of September, 19th September, remember this, when the final day of the old parliament building and a dawn of a new era, of a new parliament building on the 19th of September 2023, when the 788 members of the parliament, of the Lok Sabha, of the Rajya Sabha will be bidding adio and then marching toward the new parliament building. Of course, we will hope that with the significance of this special session, they will be looking forward not to just better facilities, to better logistics, security technology, but they will be also looking forward to better political discourse, better decisions, where whether it is the opposition or the members in the ruling party will give us policies and direction that this country can be proud of. That is the photo opportunity session that's taking place. Ashwarya Palivalath gets us the latest on that. Ashwara, you know, I can't help but of course look at how incredible the new parliament building looks like. It looks no less than the United Nations General Assembly. It has all the facilities and therefore perhaps likely there wasn't much of an opposition also to the, to the change by the opposition members too.
Well, the opposition members, obviously Pooja understood the fact that this is a building that we need in times to come. And what better, you know, to make sure that it happens when, when the government has the full might and the government wants to do it. And over the past many years, there were many complaints in the old building and especially with regards to making sure that once the number of MPs increases both in Lok Sabha and Rajya Sabha, then the old building was actually ill-equipped to handle all those things. You know, when we also speak about the number of people who come come here, that too has been increasing over the years. So keeping all those things in mind and also making sure that technology is something that we need to make, that you know, we need to embrace. That's what the party and the prime minister have been speaking about. You know, let me tell you, one of the things that will happen in the new building is that there are solar panels, something that prime minister has been speaking about, the government has been speaking about and something that you know, across the world we are speaking about the fact that we need to be, we need to be eco-friendly. So that's also something which has been incorporated in the new building. So keeping all those things in mind and making sure.
All right, Ashwara, or Ashwara, hold on. Prime Minister Narendra Modi got down from his vehicle and entering into the old building one final time. These are the steps of the stairs of the old building built in 1927 after six years, the British colonial era, reflective of so much that India has faced both before 1947 and after. And now, all these decades later in 2023, the final walk that Prime Minister Modi has taken to the old building. It is a moment, remember, as emotional as it would be for the members of parliament too, but also is reflective of a new dawn of what will the new parliament building bring? The sort of discourse, the sort of decisions that our members of the parliament who we have elected, who have got nominated in the Rajya Sabha, they have a huge responsibility on their shoulders, that people of this country would be proud of the decisions that these members of parliament will take. This is a photo opportunity, looking at the Lok Sabha speaker as well. Remember, walks slower than usual, many of them soaking into of course the old building. And the mood that is as much of course enthusiasm of moving into the new parliament building of likely, I can understand, and I've covered parliament for all these years, to know that it has always been an extremely busy premises. Members of parliament running from one location to another, stopping by to, to give reactions to the, to the members of the media as well, a lot of chit chatter that takes place near the chambers, the corridors of the old parliament building, where always you, you could catch up with some of the members of the parliament. What kind of perhaps an atmosphere will the new parliament building win? As much for the members of parliament as for the media persons, remember, it's a moment of bidding goodbye and also expecting much better from the new parliament building. Ashwarya, so we are looking at these photographs and of Prime Minister Modi also walking up the stairs into the old building. So we will expect a final photo session here and then will they march immediately toward the new parliament building, Ashwarya?
Well, you know, we will see the prime minister speaking with almost all the, you know, people there, he'll be speaking with the MPs and then there will be a slow walk, you know, not a march of sorts, Pooja, but obviously a slow walk, you know, because this in fact is a historical moment, a slow walk from the old building to the new building, signaling that India has arrived. And let me tell you, there are six gates and the names of those gates are Gajdwar, Hamza Dwar, Shardula Dwar, Gaduda Dwar, Makra Dwar and also Ashwadwar. So when we look at all these names, we understand that Indian culture has been put to the forefront. You know, these are huge statues almost at all the gates, six of them, you know, just welcoming you. So all those things have been kept in mind, the designs have been kept in mind. On one side is the Indian culture and on the other side is the technology that will awe most of the people, most of the MPs, once they step in. The rooms, Pooja, let me tell you, have already been allotted. All the MPs will now be shifting into their new rooms and the new rooms are also extremely tech savvy. All those things will be kept in mind. And in fact, you know, when the MPs will be sitting on the seats, they will have a tablet in front of them. So that's the kind of design that has been made for the new building, Pooja.
All right, tech savvy new parliament building, as my colleague Ashwarya is telling us, there will likely be tablets, iPads that will be made available to our members of parliament so that a lot of the functioning of the parliament will be of course in modern times. The visuals of Prime Minister Narendra Modi arriving, all other members of parliament are set and ready. And, and parliamentary affairs minister Pralaj Joshi, other, other members of parliament as well. A namaskar from Prime Minister Modi to the Lok Sabha speaker. And then of course heading, that's where standing amid the applause. Let's dip in to the sound here if we can catch on to it. This is the new, this is before they head to the new parliament building. You're looking at all the senior members of parliament. Some of them, remember, have been members whether in parliament or in political life, have been there for more than 30 to 40 years. And some of them are literally veterans who spent many decades in the old building, a British era building built in 1927. And now you see final photograph taking place, seated in the center, Prime Minister Narendra Modi, Vice President of the country, who's also the Rajya Sabha Chairperson Jagdeep Dhankar, and other leaders and Lok Sabha Speaker of course, Om Birla as well, and other senior members of the parliament seated there together. And it's incredible to look at this image. Remember about 788 to be specific, about 800 of members of parliament, some of them seated, literally squatting on the ground because they're all, it, it will be very difficult to fit them all together. Home Minister Amit Shah, we can see walking up to someone, we'll try and get clarity on what happened. You're looking at Defence Minister Rajnaat Singh, Minister Anethin Gatkuri, Lok Sabha Speaker Om Birla, Vice President of the country Jagdeep Dhankar, who's also the Rajya Sabha Chairperson, Prime Minister Modi, they're seated in the front. Behind them also, I can see all the ministers from the government standing. This is also of course protocol and procedure, but Home Minister Amit Shah has just got up, it appears, to, to help and assist one of the other members of the parliament. But one can't help but be in awe of this picture. It's very rarely because we usually only see the final photograph. But for all of them to assemble together, this is a moment no member of parliament will want to miss. This is a moment for the history books, 19th September 2023. That is when the final session, final day of the old building took place. All our members of parliament present here together for one last time in the old building before they all march together to fight, debate, discuss, decide the direction of India, of Bharat in the next few years in the new parliament building. And as Ashwarya was also telling us earlier, the doors of the new parliament building have got names that Indians can relate to. It has clearly the feeling of nationalism, patriotism and to know that this is our parliament and built in what and how Indians deserve it, not only a British colonial era gift. There was a lot of opposition to it also earlier, but today it appears for one moment, all these members of parliament have got together, 788 in total. And consider getting all 800 of them together would be no easy task. Ashwarya, over to you, because you've been inside the parliament buildings as well and I would say both old and new. Do tell us about a bit of a difference that you can tell us about as we stay with these visuals of the photo opportunity.
Well, Pooja, you know, it's a swanky new building. Once you step into it, you will see how retina scans have been put in place. So definitely, security was a top priority for the government while making this new building. And once you step inside, you will see the CCTV cameras that have been put in place. You will also be able to see the large LEDs that have been put in place. You know, all the documents, most of them, you know, the offices inside the new building will mostly be paperless because that's how the functioning will take place. And that's something that prime minister has been speaking about that India needs to embrace technology, not just that. He also said that this in fact is India's decade. So all those things, keeping all those things in mind, these are the nitty gritties that went into making, you know, the new parliament building. So that's the tech on one side. On the other side, Pooja, is the Samudramanthan, you know. If we speak about India, if we speak about our culture, Samudramanthan is a landmark. So you know, on one of the walls, you have the depiction of the Samudramanthan. If we speak about, you know, a national flag, you know, if we speak about the emblem, all those things have been very, you know, have been incorporated in the new building. And one of the things that will now happen, because if we speak about the Lok Sabha, the freeze was done way back in 2001 for the next 25 years, which means that there is a delimitation that will take place in the year 2026, which means that the number of seats will increase.
Ashwarya, Ashwarya, stay on with me. That's interesting snippets that you're telling us about what is in the new parliament building. And of course, we'll be waiting to see as and when all of them enter into the new parliament building, 788. And I'm told and that new larger four-story building actually can seat about 1,272 individuals, way more than the old building could accommodate. Pallavi Sahar is right there inside that building, an old building for now. She sent us a ground report earlier. Pallavi, over to you. It's no easy task to get all of these members of parliament together. I can see someone is trying to coordinate the seating capacity. But for one last moment, what did you see around you, Pallavi? Was it an emotional moment, more enthusiasm for the next time? And I see your hand going up. The photographer saying everyone ready and click. Pallavi.
That's right. The photo session officially is beginning right now because all the MPs are in and all are settled. They've taken their places. This is a large group, as you can just imagine, of the parliament and Rajya Sabha. And just a short, kind of, a little bit of an incident over here because, you know, as you know, the weather is very humid and sultry. You know, Narhari Amin, one of the Rajya Sabha MPs, belongs to the Bhagat Dhanapati, he in fact dropped in his seat. He possibly fell unconsciously, weren't very sure whether he painted or together, but he did drop on his feet immediately. The attendants rushed him. The members of parliament were standing next to him, held him eventually. And then of course, he was brought down from the podium because he was literally standing on the topmost, you know, level of that podium which has been created for this photo session. It's almost like a class photograph that is being taken of a class that's graduating at the moment, as we see right now, all smiles as that photo is being taken finally. And he was brought down, Narhari Amin, and Dr. Mahesham, who's obviously a practicing doctor, immediately rushed to him, rushed to him. Oh, there are cheers now going out, loud shouts going out as well, as of course, everyone acknowledges the successful photo session completed in this moment. Narhari Amin, we go to face, he's, we saw him, his vitals were being checked and he was in fact being, you know, attended to.
Do tell us about the member of parliament, Narhari Amin's health right now. What do you hear? Is he, is he part of the photo session or did he have to be taken out of this premises, Pallavi?
No, he was unconscious and he was seated. They attended to him, they gave him water, they checked his vitals and only after he felt a little better because he was seated finally was not on the topmost level of that podium. He was brought down, he was seated and then of course, that photo was taken. It couldn't be of course that, you know, a member of parliament wouldn't be available for this photograph. Obviously, he would have also wanted to be part of the photograph. It's been standing there for such a long time. But like I said, the weather is such, the best of us, because, you know, in the crosshairs, it's sultry, it's humid, you know, it's porching, you know, it's very, very, you know, difficult to keep standing over there. Many of them had reached here in time, had been standing for close to about 9:15 AM, 9:10 AM. And finally, the photograph has been taken and everyone's stepping down and will be headed towards the central hall in the overheading of parliament, for that function which is, which takes place, that very elaborate function, which will recall of course, the past parliament tradition of the last 75 years and of course pledge to make India a developed nation by 2047. So that long program is to begin in a short while from now. But that first item on the itinerary for the day, just is out of the way.
So once we get access to that big picture, that must have been clicked right now with all our members of parliament together, all smiles, no member of parliament would want to miss this moment. The final picture that would be, that would, that has already been clicked, I'm told now, at the old building. But there was a slight, slight scare with one of the BJP members of parliament, Narhari Amin, who appears to have fallen. As you can see, Home Minister Amit Shah walks up to ensure he's all right. Other members of parliament also checked on him. He's fine now, is what we are told, given a glass of water and then he was back up because as our colleagues are saying, nobody wants to miss this special occasion too, he's all right. But the photograph has been clicked and now some interactions are on, applause and cheers are on. What a moment, Pallavi, isn't it? From here, they will be heading on the festival of Ganesh Chaturthi to, to the new building as well. Pallavi, yes. Pallavi, I request you to stay on because I'm told that there are some more visuals that are coming in. All right, these are the visuals of, there is a sudden bit of commotion for a while as one of the BJP MP Narhari Amin, as Pallavi you were telling us about, had fallen. But we can say that his health is fine right now, he's back up and was a part of the, of the photograph, the group photograph that was clicked.
That's right. He definitely was a part of that photograph. Of course, MPs are now going over because suddenly of course, it's seated until they can of course arrange for proper medical assistance to reach him. They are of course keeping him seated. So there are MPs who are just walking over to Narhari Amin at the moment and just checking on him right now. But really, a big, big moment of the day. You know, parliamentarians who've been part of parliament for so many terms, part of this, there are those who've come here for the first time, of course, in the 17th Lok Sabha, again, a part of this as well. Huge, you know, cheers and round of applause that went out as of course, that photo session was completed. This is a moment to cherish. This is the setting for parliamentarians that saw it being made as parliament, being in parliament, from the old building to the new building. Today of course, they will be making quite literally that journey, Pooja, from the old building to the new building, which I tried to cross a pavement which is there inside the parliament complex. But it is going to be extremely emotional for them. It is going to be quite the moment for them.
And Pallavi, not a historic moment just for the members of parliament, but for you and I and all our media colleagues as well, 19th September 2023, bidding goodbye to the old parliament building where many of us have, have been running for years to try and get one snippet from the member of parliament, to try and get what's been happening inside Scoop as well. All of that will now shift to the new parliament building, which will hereon be called the Parliament of India, where all our members of parliament, of the Lok Sabha and the Rajya Sabha will be seated. And we will hope that the new parliament building with its technology, logistics, security and many more facilities will bring in stronger decisions that will ensure this country moves forward in a brilliant direction. On that note, I'm signing off and handing it over to my colleague Sneha Murdani in the studios as we stay on with these visuals. 19th September 2023, you and Sneha, I were anchoring when the new parliament building was being inaugurated.
Yes, absolutely. And Pooja, like Pallavi, all of us have spent considerable amount of time in the old parliament house, like you said rightly, trying to get some information, some snippets, some sound voids and some cover from the proceedings of the house, like we've almost done, always done rather. This undoubtedly is a historic moment. Thanking you, Pooja. And Pallavi continues to be with us. Pallavi is in fact witnessing that historic moment right now in front of her. Pallavi, all of these parliamentarians coming together for that photo opportunity. Just talk to us a little about how things are. Okay, going across to Pallavi in a moment from now, but Ashwarya Palivalath also continues to be with us. Ashwarya, right now, pictures of this photo opportunity that we see on our screens. What next as far as the proceedings of the day is concerned?
First, Sneha, let me tell you, you know, one of the most important things that had to be done today was this historic photo of, this historic photo of has been taken. We understand now that in about an hour's time or so, Prime Minister Narendra Modi along with a book of the Indian constitution will be walking from the new old parliament building and then going into the new parliament building. Now, at the new parliament building, you know, there are six doors and all these doors have these guardian-like structures, you know, and all of them symbolize what Indian culture stands for. And once you step inside, Sneha, let me tell you, you know, it's sort of a Disneyland for those who love technology because there are retina scans, there are CCTVs, there are large LEDs that have been put in place. And the, the idea is to make sure that in years to come, the functioning of the new parliament building becomes almost paperless. That's something that has been kept in mind. So high-tech security features have been put in place, but also all those things that symbolize Indian culture, those things have been kept in mind and those designs have been built. So all these things will be available from about 1pm today because that's the time when, you know, the Lok Sabha session will begin from today. Now, one of the important things and that's what the prime minister has also been speaking about is the fact that the new delimitation will happen in the year 2026 because, you know, the last delimitation happened in the year 2001. And then there was a freeze for the next 25 years with regards to Lok Sabha. So that will happen in the year 26 and then we will see an increase in the number of Lok Sabha MPs. So that's the reason why we are seeing the increased capacity both in Lok Sabha as well as in Rajya Sabha. The old building, you know, just to give you a little bit of history, was, the design in fact was approved in the year 1921 and it was inaugurated by Lord Irwin in the year 1927. And in fact, the architect, you know, of the old building was Edward Latian. So all those things, you know, keeping history on one side. And now the idea is to make sure that we have a new building that symbolizes the new India.
Well, absolutely. These pictures are in fact of the photo opportunity right outside the old parliament building, which of course is going to be then a museum now. And then all parliamentarians have come together for this photo opportunity. Members of the Lok Sabha, Rajya Sabha convening for the last time together in the old parliament building that you see in fact on your screens, Ashwarya, you were telling us of the proceedings today. Essentially, in the new building or the new parliament house will begin at around 1. What about the Pooja? Talk to us a little more about that as well. Ashwarya. Okay, we'll go back to Ashwarya in a moment from now, once again, but getting in these details right now from the old parliament house, where all members of parliament in fact have gathered. You just saw in the vice president and also the chairman of the Rajya Sabha. In fact, walk into the frame, these are pictures in fact from a moment ago when parliamentarians have gathered outside the old parliament building for the photo opportunity is the last time that they are convening, coming together for this photo opportunity in every sense of the word. This day is historic as India moves on to the new parliament building, which of course has, has features to in fact deal with the current situation vis-à-vis the number of MPs in parliament, technology. Also, in fact, the new advancements in technology clearly kept in mind when it comes to the new structure and the new requirements in fact in this day, an era of Indian politics, all of that clearly kept in mind as far as the new parliament building is concerned. New parliament, clearly new priorities. And these are pictures in fact from the old parliament building where there is a photo opportunity right now, where MPs are in fact coming together, all of them have come together for the last time in the old parliament building for the photo opportunity. Of course, the house convenes at 1 o'clock like Ashwarya was indicating to us. In fact, this is a special session of parliament that started just yesterday. I'm going to go across straight to Pallavi Sahar also to talk to us a little more about what to expect, Pallavi, in the next few minutes or so after the photo opportunity is complete, they'll be moving to the new building. What about the Pooja? When does the session start? Tell us more.
Well, you know, there are still a bunch of photographs that are being done with, you know, Lok Sabha MPs, Rajya Sabha MPs separately as well. So that photo session is currently underway. Earlier it was of course the joint.
Apologies for that.
Who are basically taking that photograph. And then of course, you're going to see that program in the central hall begin, which was started about 11am this morning. We've given a small break after this photo session is over. And then of course, that program begins where, you know, the parliamentarians will reminisce about the parliamentary legacy of the last 75 years and will also pledge and vow to date India into, you know, the next few decades as a development nation by 2047. We're watching that transition happen right now quite literally from Rajya Sabha MPs getting down from the podium to Lok Sabha MPs now climbing up as soon as possible. Some of course who almost feel like they're hustling a good spot in that photograph. So they're rushing in to probably that center for, you know, one of the side spots as far as, you know, the photograph is concerned. They probably want to be seen behind, you know, the leadership which is sitting in the front. So some of them you can almost see hustling for that center spot, like I said. But that moment is happening right now. So Rajya Sabha MPs have taken their single photographs and now Lok Sabha MPs are going to take their photographs after which, like I said, those features will happen in the central hall of parliament. That begins at 11am this morning. We'll see of course, speeches being made by Prime Minister Modi, by Vice President and Chairman of the Rajya Sabha Jagdeep Dhankar. We'll see a special and. Basically, the largest party in the Lok Sabha. And then of course, Manika Gandhi, who is leader of the opposition in Rajya Sabha, which Pooja is also going to speak as leader of the house in the Rajya Sabha. And we're also expecting Manika Gandhi and Dr. Manol Singh and Shibu Soren to speak as well. We're here to confirm if, you know, they will be there for that program because clearly obviously they're, you know, old and they can't be part of the hustle and bustle of this photo. But it's likely they could be there to address of course, the central hall on this last stage, you know, visiting. But we just spoke to Manika Gandhi and she's already with her speech already reminiscing about how she has been the longest serving parliamentarian in the Lok Sabha, has seen seven prime ministers, she don't miss me, in her entire time in parliament. in her entire time in parliament.
Well, absolutely. You know, you spoke about the fact that many of the MPs will be at the central hall, Pallavi. Does the media have access to the central hall yet? Any special exceptions being made today?
Not really. We will of course be watching this program from the outside. So we of course had access to the photo session, we could witness of course this moment as it happens. But as far as that moment inside the central hall is concerned, when the speeches are made, it's not open to the media. It is obviously for the parliamentarians, for parliamentarians who are ready to take their way towards, in fact, the central hall as we speak right now. This has been quite the feature of their time in parliament because as you know, Sneha, you've covered parliament as well. Central hall is where they come, they hang out, where it's usually time, the party line, all the political decreeing and, you know, the barbs that you see, you can pass outside of parliament when you look inside central hall and you peek inside central hall. Or some of the senior journalists who had access inside central hall. When you go in, they're all mixing around, they're all, you know, connecting with each other. You know, Barashra MPs could be sitting up with each other, all parties included, whether they are forced on the political battlefield or not. Kenla MPs, you know, it's very interesting to watch how, you know, everyone just sort of mix around with each other and spends time with each other, talking to each other because political differences aside, these are individuals who spend a lot of time inside parliament, of course, you know, participating, they've made friends, they've made bench partners as well, people who've been sitting next to them for years. You know, they've made. They've picked on, you know, the spots that they'd like to sit in. Some people, you know, have been sitting in that particular spot for a while, they hustled for that spot as well with, of course, you know, their respective houses and all of that. It's going to leave a lot of memories for, of course, all of these parliamentarians and us, the media as well as building. The structure that I'm standing inside right now, which is inside the lawn area right now, Sneha, you're aware of it. It's when you enter from gate number one and of course there's the lawn area and then there's the central hall entrance. I'm in that lawn area where that photo session took place right now, right next to the massive statue of Pandit Jawaharlal Erwin Tadhar, Balabhai Padel. And this, you know, all of these are memories. We have, you know, spent such time with each other that we've learned every little looking for at the complex. We know where each minister sits, we know whose room is there, which party or office is where. So now the daunting task of learning the whole thing all over again in the new parliament building where MPs will also have their own rooms, so do more houses where we do know that top eleven cabinet ministers have been of course given their places on the ground floor. Yeah, exactly. A lot of memories of having chased down people of your size, you know, witnessed commotion and rockets and tearing up offices inside parliament as well. And all of that, we're left with. Of course, these parliamentarians are left with much more.
Yes. You know, Pallavi, you spoke about chasing them and I think the chasing is going to be multiplied by five times given that this is a bigger parliament and like you said, members of parliament now have a room. So all the more difficult to chase each one of them. Earlier, there were, of course, there are rooms that are given to leaders of the house, leaders of the opposition, but now we have individual MPs and this is a much bigger building, isn't it, as compared to the old one?
Absolutely. It's a massively complex that we're looking at right now. Right now, I just of course see Mr. Sonia Gandhi and Adinandjan Jodhi who just walked back in with a photograph of the Lok Sabha MPs that are sitting there in the moment. But yeah, as you said, a massive complex that we're looking at several different entries again. Prime Minister is a particular dwar, then of course the entry for the members of parliament is one particular dwar again. The one that I was showing in my report earlier this morning is called the Makar Dwar. It's right opposite gate number one for the old building of parliament, but a much huge complex. Like I said, it's going to be a bigger daunting kind of, you know, spot everyone's offices know where they sit, know where who comes out of what. If you look at parliament, Sneha, you know, you know which are the set of MPs who took out of gate. The other set of MPs that tend to come out of three next to the speaker's gate. You know that MPs that tend to come out of gate number twelve, which is on the Rajya Sabha side. So you sort of have a fair inkling as to if you need to get hold of a particular MP, which gate you should be rushing towards. You don't need to scramble towards any different gates because it's of all the gates to come out for, they just tend to prefer a particular gate and that's been their usual, you know, route, so to say. So you've mapped out all those routes quite literally as a journalist, you know, you know, who comes out of where and go ahead in order to catch hold of them. But again, it's going to be a whole learning task again as we of course navigate our way through this new parliament building.
Well, absolutely. Absolutely. A whole new task and it's going to be not easy, at least for the initial few days as like Pallavi was saying, the reporters navigate around, literally Pallavi, gate number four, gate number one, gate number two. We literally know which MP is going to come out from which gate. And, you know, there were hardly any mistakes when it came to waiting at the gates for them and and spotting them, isn't it? I'll just come back to you for a moment. We are just talking about these pictures right now, photo opportunity of all the members of parliament, these are Lok Sabha MPs who in fact come together for these photographs the last time in the old parliament building today, undoubtedly by every yardstick. It's a historic day as all of these members of parliament in fact moved to the new building today. Pallavi, about two o'clock when we see Rajya Sabha convene and about one fifteen is when Lok Sabha convenes today. Going back to Pallavi in a moment from now. But these are pictures in fact from the old parliament building as these MPs in fact move to the new parliament building just today itself, where proceedings of Rajya Sabha will in fact reconvene at two fifteen on, in fact, in the new parliament building. And the proceedings of the Lok Sabha, Lowar House will be in fact reconvening at about one fifteen PM in the new parliament building. Amidst all of this, there's been a lot of conversation about what has happened vis-à-vis the last seventy-five years in the old parliament building. The prime minister in fact spoke about that in detail, the contribution of all prime ministers, the contribution of all members of parliament in, in fact, the old parliament building in a speech yesterday. Today, of course, is a new day, the new parliament building with all the MPs moving into the new parliament building and the work is going to in fact begin from there. This is a special session of parliament, remember, which convened, which started in fact yesterday, which is the eighteenth of September. Ashwarya in fact is back with us. Ashwarya, you were talking to us a little also about and do touch upon that once again about the fact that in years to come, whenever there is in fact the delimitation plan drawn once again in the number of constituencies in the country, parliamentary constituencies in the country increase, that is when we'll see the full utilization of the new parliament building, isn't it?
Well, let me tell you, Sneha, you know, there was a freeze that was put on the Lok Sabha and the freeze, you know, took place way back in the year two thousand and one for the next twenty-five years. So the next delimitation exercise that we will see taking place will happen in the year twenty twenty-six. So this means in the year twenty twenty-six and then the next big elections will be in the year twenty twenty-nine. So we will see that there will be an increase in the number of, you know, MPs in Lok Sabha as well as in Rajya Sabha. So keeping that in mind, the number of seats in fact have been increased. The current seating capacity for the MPs for Lok Sabha is eight hundred and eighty-eight, which is an increase from the five hundred and forty-five number that we have currently. If we speak about Rajya Sabha, then we are seeing that the, you know, the seating capacity has been increased to three hundred and twenty-four. So keeping all those things in mind and making sure that at least this building stands for the next one hundred years, that's the vision that the central government has. And in fact, if we speak about the old building also, grade one heritage is something that the old building now comes under. So keeping all these things in mind and that there was a need to make sure that a structure stands which is truly Indian and that structure is the new building that we will see today. The first session of Lok Sabha will commence at about one PM today. That's the time when the speaker will address the Lok Sabha. And you know, from there on, this actually will be the dawn of a new beginning, beginning of a new era.
Well, absolutely. Undoubtedly, the special session of parliament in fact started yesterday and the proceedings will continue. In the new parliament building is what Ashwarya of course is indicating, the timings of which are the house to convene, the upper house is two fifteen, Ashwarya, and Lok Sabha convenes at about one fifteen today.
Right Sneha, you know, we will see that very special session, you know, if you speak about the Lok Sabha, it will be about one fifteen and Rajya Sabha will convene at about two fifteen. But before that, we will get those historic images. Those images of Prime Minister Narendra Modi with all the MPs of our country, upper house, lower house, all of them will be walking from the old building as a symbol, symbolic, you know, that walk will be when they will be moving and then we will see the shift. In fact, the official inauguration had taken place on the twenty-eighth of May and this building is actually at the heart of the big central vista project that the government has undertaken. The entire central Delhi area will be transformed in years to come and we are seeing how small, small parts have started taking place. But yes, the new parliament building that you see behind me is at the heart of the central vista project.
Okay. Also, the central hall will now in fact see, Ashwarya, certain MPs also speak. That of course is an opportunity not available for the media. I'm just going to put that question to Pallavi Sahar with the very latest details as far as what really is expected in the central hall, Pallavi.
Right, Sneha, there's a program which will happen in the central hall of parliament. We are expecting that a ceremony will take place, which will basically be about, like I said earlier, about of course, you know, talking about the parliamentary experience of for the last seventy-five years and pledging to make India a developed nation by twenty forty-seven. There will be speeches that will be made as well, a whole host of speeches that will be made, which will include a welcome speech by the parliamentary affairs minister, Pranaj Joshi, followed by of course, you know, the prime minister making a speech, the vice president, also the chairman of the Rajya Sabha making a speech, Om Bina Speaker making a speech as well as Manika Karjunkar, who will of course as the leader of the opposition in the Rajya Sabha make a speech as well. Piyush Goyal is also likely to speak as leader of the house in the Rajya Sabha. Also, very interestingly, Manika Gandhi, who in fact is the longest-serving parliamentarian in the Lok Sabha, will be making a speech. We, as I said, I spoke to her a short while ago, we'll try and of course, you know, play that interaction out as soon as we can. Have had that interaction with her where she of course has got nostalgic about her time spent here in parliament. Also, we're expecting Dr. Manol Singh, at least the invitations have gone out to Dr. Manol Singh as the longest-serving parliamentarian in the Rajya Sabha to speak during this program as well as Shibu Soren, former chief minister of the state of Charpan, to speak as the longest-serving parliamentarian in the Rajya Sabha and Lok Sabha combined. So there will be these long speeches. It's slotted for between eleven AM to twelve thirty this afternoon, after which proceedings are to move to the new parliament building. So you'll see the prime minister, led by the parliamentary affairs minister and the speaker, moving from this old building towards the new building. MPs will also move along. We expect that the prime minister will be carrying the constitution handbook with him as he moves from one building to the other. And then of course, there are proceedings to take place over there as well. The prime minister will be speaking again as well. There's a lot of speculation as to whether the prime minister would use this opportunity and the occasion of Fergan Ashadusi to probably announce that the cabinet has approved the women's reservation bill, remember, because you anyway have to intimate parliamentarians at least forty-eight hours before you bring the bill to parliament. But it's expected that the prime minister could just use this occasion to announce the same.
I'm just going to come back to you in a moment from now. In fact, Pallavi did mention that she had interviewed Meenaka Gandhi. We played that exclusive reaction of Meenaka Gandhi right now. Listen in.
Joining us right now is Miss Manika Gandhi, former union minister who has been the longest-serving member of parliament in the Lok Sabha. She's going to be speaking today at the central hall function, ma'am. What are your memories of this building and all, tell your as.
Respect goes to my adult life. I entered when I was thirty-two and has been thirty-five years. So I've seen seven prime ministers and hundreds of them come and go. I don't know, nice time and yet.
How would you characterize this moment, ma'am, in terms of transitioning from the old building into the new building? How do you see this?
Well, India's also transitioning, so. Perhaps you have the sense of, yeah.
That was Manika Gandhi who will be speaking at the central hall in a short while from now.
Pallavi in conversation with Meenaka Gandhi there and these are pictures in fact from a while ago of the grand photo session inside parliament, inside the old parliament building. And there is in fact a gathering, a ceremony at the central hall, like Pallavi was pointing out. I'll try and go across to Pallavi with us, if Pallavi can be connected with us. And then of course, the new parliament building will see these MPs and the proceedings in fact will be resumed from the new parliament building this afternoon. Pallavi continues to be with us. Pallavi, at two fifteen is when the Rajya Sabha convenes, reconvenes and one fifteen is when the Lok Sabha reconvenes.
That's right. We will of course see those proceedings taking place in both houses of course as the, you know, parliament in fact moves into the new building, which I'm looking at as we speak right now. Already, you know, hectic preparations have been underway over the last week. Mock drills have been conducted, the security is extremely tight because everyone has had, you know, has taken the time to understand and navigate their way through the building and ensure that every looking collar is covered in terms of of course amenities, security, personnel presence and all arrangements included. So that is of course what is happening as we speak inside that new parliament building before of course the parliamentarians start moving into that new building. Some of the parliamentarians of course now taking breaks, taking a breath in their parliamentary party offices, congress leaders in fact are hiding up inside the congress parliamentary party office along with Manika Karjunkar. So they're of course, you know, having a little bit of a chat and a banter. The topic of conversation, Sneha, of course, is the cabinet's approval for the women's reservation. Then earlier this morning, of course, some of us journalists had a moment to catch Mrs. Sonia Gandhi. She arrived in parliament and we asked her for her comments on the women's reservation bill and news that the cabinet has approved the same. And she said that it's ours, apna hai, that's what she said. So basically, she meant that this is a bill that we brought, we'd introduced and we'd ensured that we introduced it first in the Lok, in the Rajya Sabha and had it passed so it did not lapse, it stayed alive. But then again, because the cabinet of course has approved the bill yesterday, speculation is right that the bill that the Narendra Modi government is bringing is not the same version of further UCA bill. There could be changes in the same. So everyone's waiting to in fact read the fine print of that bill, Sneha, if you may.
Well, yes, Pallavi, be with us. In fact, we're talking about us, all of us really bidding goodbye to the old parliament building. Undoubtedly, a custodian of India's historical legacy, like MP spoke about it, including the prime minister yesterday in his speech at eleven o'clock. They're moving into the new parliament building. Pallavi, talk to us a little about the new parliament building and how that too in fact is an architectural marvel really.
Absolutely. You know, very small, little things have been kept in mind in building this building, which we literally, Sneha, over the past few sessions as we've been covering it, we saw it come up before our own eyes. So that is of course been quite the experience. This is of course going to be the seat of Indian democracy. This of course has earlier houses, the Lok Sabha and the Rajya Sabha, the two houses. This has been, you know, the design of it has been made by Bimal Patel, who in fact is the architect for the central vista project, is a Gujarat-based company. And this is of course a building which was completed earlier this year in the month of May. There is of course some work which is happening on the sidelines of it, but like I said, it is part of a larger project which is of course called the central vista redevelopment project. It was of course inaugurated, like I said, in the month of May, on the twenty-eighth of May to be specific this year by Prime Minister Narendra Modi. And this of course is extremely important now that this will be where the official business of the Parliament of India will be conducted. This is, like I said, it has many rooms in mind, not just for the ministers, not just for the prime minister's office, but several rooms for members of parliament as well. And that is what we're in fact going to see as we enter this building as well. It has many dwars per se, entry areas that have been named as various dwars. Makar Dwar is what I'm looking at right now. I'm like, I explained to you, this is, you're familiar with the complex. This is the right opposite gate number one of the post-parliament of Beijing. And, you know, this is an extremely, like I said, the lifespan of this old building that I'm standing in right now, looking across at the new building, has been over ninety years and the structure is still solid. But it's worked to a large extent, still giving way to the trials and tribulations of time. And that's exactly why this has been a. And that's exactly why this has been a proposal, which had been, you know, discussed for a very, very long time in terms of having a new Parliament building, which reflected the growing size of our population in terms of whether, you know, in the future, if there was to be a limitation, you know, there would be a larger number of parliamentarians and that needed to be accommodated. And that's exactly why.
Pallavi, in fact, I'll just come back to you in a moment from now. We are staying with this big developing story. Pictures from, in fact, the old Parliament building, where parliamentarians and Lok Sabha MPs are in this photo opportunity that continues to be a top focus right here. For the moment, it's time for a quick commercial break.
Fundamentally, we all are different from each other. And I think we just need to keep reminding ourselves that we are all so different and that is what's so beautiful.
Fashion label Human recently dropped a hard-hitting campaign on inclusivity led by Pranav Kirti. The fashion forward label celebrated eight billion humans and how they're all very different than each other.
This is just another step towards all the things that we've done in the last 10 years' journey, which is to bring people's attention to that diverse fabric of our society. Your choices are so different from mine, whether they are right or wrong is beyond my, you know, it might just be beyond my understanding. But to accept that is, I think, humanly possible, which is what we try to showcase.
The capsule collection caught our attention as it honors the strength of an individual within a collective. It celebrated varied tastes and brought to the fore the notion of likening eight billion humans on earth to eight billion distinct and unique flavors. Inclusivity is the order of the day and not just a woke sentiment. The campaign brings about a discussion on important societal issues.
Whatever we've done as a company or whatever I've done as a creative director, is the entire credit goes to the community that surrounds us. You know, from all the artists that we feed on, present in our own community. You know, even from the, whether it's the body issue or the LGBTQ issue, I am literally reflecting on what they are, you know, taking those conversations forward and leading. And the brand is just a reflection of that.
It also shows the label's commitment in transition into creating statement pieces with an elevated approach. In New Delhi, Shethi Narula for India Today.
Keh to jate hain 75 saal, lekin jab tak mera jaankari hai, sabse pehle jo constitution assembly ki shaba hui thi, vo 1946 me, aur 1949, 26 febru meriye adopt hui thi, aur 1950, 26 janwari, ye chalu hui thi hamare sangvidhan idesh me, lekin aap kaha se 75 saal ki amrit kal ye laya gaya, ye mujhe samajh me nahi aate hain. Neheru nahi, us constitution assembly me, jitne log ke sare ne ye sapat li thi ki, hum desh ko aage bharayenge aur desh aage bhatt bhatti ya taq pahunchi. Sat chandre jan ki baat ho rey the, aap jaankari, aapko jaankari dena chahte hain, 1946 me, hamare desh ki aajadi ke pehle, ye neheruji ki net cito me, Ato B G research committee banaaya gaya tha. 1948 se, hamare desh me, ye neheruji ki net cito me, hum se aaj ki modern technology aur aaj ki science vidyant ki taraf, hum aage nikalti huiye. Hame, ye desh ke liye, kya kiya sir, ye desh ke liye banaaya isro. Rajendra Babu se lekar, Dr. Khala, Ramrati Kobi, aur abhi Dhrakshad Bhujuji, in sabke sammodhan khalaam, hamare sadhanon ko mila hai. Unka maardarshan mila hai. Adi Nidikji, Pandit Nehruji, Shaktriji, vaha se lekar ke Atalji, Manmohan Singh ji tak, ek bahut badi shrankha, jitne is sadhan ka netrut to kiya hai. Aur sadhan ke maadham se desh ko dishati hai. Desh ko nai rang rup me dhalne ke liye, unhone parisham kiya hai, pursaath kiya hai. Aaj, unshatta gavraugan karne ka bhi aushar hai. Adanghi Bikkji, Sardar Malu Bhai Pati, Loyya ji, Chandra Chikarji, Adwanji, najani, angvinet naam, jinone, hamare is sadhan ko samrudh karne me, charchao to samrudh karne, desh ke samanya se samanya vikti ki aavaz ko taqat dena ka kaam, is sadhan me kiya hai.
And we have a big story breaking at this hour. Canadian High Commissioner to India has now been summoned. Canadian High Commissioner McKay at South Block after Canada accused India of killing wanted terrorist Nijar. The summon for the Canadian High Commissioner right now, Cameron McKay, is what we've been given to understand. Gaurav Savanta, managing editor, is also, in fact, with us for more details. Gaurav is reciprocal action on the part of India, also possible. Can that be ruled out or not, given that Canada has taken action already?
So Canada has taken action on the basis of what the Canadian Prime Minister Justin Trudeau described as credible allegations. Allegations, not evidence but allegations, potential link, not proven link but potential link. Now, based on allegations and a suspected link, Canada has taken this strong action. And this, you know, has not gone, India has not taken very kindly to this. The Canadian High Commissioner was summoned to the Ministry of External Affairs. India has expressed our displeasure, especially at the fact that a very senior diplomat has been expelled by Canada on the basis only of allegations and a potential link and no evidence was shared with India. Even when Justin Trudeau, on the sidelines of G20, when there was a pull aside with Prime Minister Narendra Modi, when Justin Trudeau had raised this, India had very strongly rejected it and had asked Canada to take action against the Khalistani elements. Now, this Nijar was involved and India has sought his custody from 2007 itself, when he was suspected to be involved in a bombing in India. So it's not, he's not just a separatist, he's a suspected terrorist. A suspected terrorist who entered Canada illegally. And incidentally, reports from Canada now seem to indicate, Sneha, that this plumber, who was also the head of a gurdwara, he came to Canada in 1997, claimed refugee status, incidentally, which was denied. So he did not get refugee status. He had used a false passport, a fake passport to enter Canada. Then he got married to a woman that, and sought immigration and sponsorship, that too was rejected. So based on that rejection, how did he become a Canadian citizen unless it is absolute vote bank politics of Canada and Justin Trudeau needs the Khalistani votes to win elections? So this is what India is extremely unhappy about.
Well, Gaurav, I'm going to thank you for the moment for getting us those details. Of course, India has also summoned the Canadian High Commissioner at South Block. Remains to be seen what kind of action that India will take against the Canadian High Commissioner this after Canada has accused India. And like Gaurav pointed out, without any evidence. And these are allegations that have been leveled by Canada against India. But no proof in that sense has been given to India as far as the killing of this terrorist is concerned. Shifting our focus back to India and let's talk about the new Parliament building. And what's most important here is that sources are indicating that the Cabinet has cleared the Women's Reservation Bill. Of course, the credit bar has broken out over the decision. Congress Leader Sonia Gandhi has said, apna hai, it's ours. Upon being asked, what about the Women's Reservation Bill and the fact that this government is now once again bringing it? Furthermore, Congress has claimed that Congress Women's Reservation had been their longstanding demand, which they have, in fact, been making. Further, added that Rahul Gandhi had written a letter to Prime Minister Modi on the same issue in 2018. Congress has called the Cabinet clearance a victory of Sonia Gandhi's consistency and her efforts. Remember, sources have told us that the bill was cleared in a key cabinet meeting chaired by Prime Minister Modi, which was called after special session's first sitting, which was yesterday, last evening at 6:30 PM. The bill is going to guarantee a 33% quota for women in Lok Sabha and state legislatures as well. The decision marks fulfillment of decades-old demand, actually, to be precise, 27-year-old demand of women's organizations and political parties for action for enhancing their electoral representation in legislatures.
This will make all of us very proud and India will be able to stand up now in the international arena, holding its head high and say that, yes, we've given our women enough opportunity. We will give our women opportunity and make them a part of policymaking process and the democracy that we call ourselves will be thriving. It was missing, it was missing our women in parliaments and assemblies. Now, I'm happy that this step will take them forward. But then, I am a little apprehensive and many well wishes of this bill, many people who want the bill to be passed, or also a little apprehensive because this government has not been transparent enough. So nobody knows what is in the bill, nobody knows when the bill will be introduced. I hope because of this attitude of the government, the bill will not be stalled at any cost. So I hope the bill will be passed soon.
Mahila sashakti karan Bharat me ek lambi yatra rahe hai aur is yatra ke har kar di ko hame yaad rakhna chahiye aur vishesh ruk se mahila aarakshar, kyuki is kar di ki shuruwaat, hame ne congress party ki taraf se hi ki thi. Ye mohim, main chahta hu ki aane wale samay me aur bade. Hame chahte hain ki Bharatiya nari ki shakti aane wale samay me aur bade.
Women's Reservation Bill ki shuruwaat, uska jo neev hai, vo Rajiv ji ne dali thi. Uske baad me Sonia ji ne 2010, 9 march ko, 10 march ko, usko parit kiya tha. Aur abhi aaj, aaj uska agar hota hai, pa bill to, jaise ki hamare politi ka stand hai, hame usko full unconditional support karenge.
We have more news, in fact, coming in. The High Commissioner of Canada to India was summoned today and informed about the decision of the Government of India to expel a senior Canadian diplomat based in India. The concerned diplomat has been asked to leave India within the next five days. This is a big story that we are getting. In fact, details offered this hour. The decision, of course, reflects the Government of India's growing concern at the interference of Canadian diplomats in our internal matters and their involvement in anti-India activities. Big story that we are getting at this hour. This, of course, is the fallout of allegations that have been leveled by Canadian Prime Minister Justin Trudeau against India, talking about the alleged involvement of Indian agencies and the killing of a Canadian citizen, quote-unquote, is what Justin Trudeau said, referring to terrorist Nijar, Hardeep Singh in Nijar. India has taken action. The High Commissioner of Canada to India was summoned today and informed about the decision of the Government of India to expel a senior Canadian diplomat based in India. This is a senior Canadian diplomat who has been expelled. Gaurav has more details on that. Gaurav, talk to us a little about this action. Who is the senior Canadian diplomat? India says that this person essentially is somebody who was interfering. And in India's internal matters, also, there has been proof of his involvement in anti-India activities.
So it's fit for that action immediately that India has taken after Canada expelled the top official of the research and analysis wing, who was posted in Canada. India has retaliated, immediately taken reciprocal action and said that the High Commissioner of Canada to India was summoned today and informed of the decision that's been taken by the Government of India to expel a senior Canadian diplomat based in India.
Gaurav, just coming back to you in a second from now. Please hold on to your thoughts. To tell our viewers, on the left side of your screens are pictures of Cameron McKay, the High Commissioner, who was summoned at the South Block. And of course, India has informed him that there has been action and expect more. The decision, of course, of the Indian governments to expel a senior Canadian diplomat based in India. On the left side of your screen are pictures, in fact, of the Canadian High Commissioner, who was summoned to South Block and informed about the decision of the Government of India to expel a senior Canadian diplomat based in India. These are pictures of Cameron McKay, in fact, leaving South Block right now. Listen in to what he said when he tried to get a word from him.
Uh, you have got to call the external affairs, mister. Sir, you meet the... Sir. Uh, you have got to call the external affairs, mister. Sir, you meet the... Sir. Uh, you have got to call the external affairs, mister. Sir, you meet the... Sir.
Okay, in fact, not speaking a word, absolutely tight lip there. Well, this action that India has taken, Gaurav continues to be with that. The Canadian High Commissioner, Gaurav, not saying a word after, in fact, that meeting. He was leaving South Block but didn't speak a word about this development.
You know, this is because the relationship between India and Canada have hit rock bottom because of Justin Trudeau's inaction against Khalistani elements, the people that he's so dependent on to win elections, backing Hardeep Singh, Nijar, calling him a Canadian citizen at a time when Canada has repeatedly been requested by Government of India to take action against secessionists, separatists and terrorist supporters with evidence. India has given evidence of their involvement in secessionist and separatist activities. India also told Canada that these elements have been involved in anti-Canada activities, from human trafficking to narco-terrorism, to drug trade, all of these, they've been involved in illegal activities to fund their secessionist movement against India. Despite that, since Justin Trudeau is dependent on Jagmeet Singh and his party to win elections, to remain in power, Canada refuses to take action and tries to couch it under freedom of expression. So bad was the situation that human rights activists in Canada pointed out that a school in Saray was being used for a referendum where armed terrorists were being shown as, you know, depicted in schools where impressionable children would have seen them. After that, the referendum at Saray was shifted to a gurdwara. So India said, enough is enough, take action or the relationship actually heads outward. Now, that is where Canada has taken this action, expelling a top Indian diplomat. And in a retaliatory measure, India has now expelled a top Canadian diplomat. You know, some of these diplomats were actively traveling to Punjab and some other parts of our country, meeting separatists, meeting secessionists, trying to find trouble in India. All of that will come out in the form of a dossier, you know, in the days and weeks ahead, very carefully collated by India.
Well, absolutely. Gaurav be with us. Let's just, in fact, try and listen in once again to what really happened there. Of course, the Canadian High Commissioner was tight-lipped, Cameron McKay. While leaving South Block, reporters tried to get a word from him, but he didn't say a word. Let's take a look.
Call the external affairs, mister. Sir, you meet the... Sir. Uh, you have got to call the external affairs, mister. Sir, you meet the... Sir. Uh, you have got to call the external affairs, mister. Sir, you meet the... Sir. Uh, you have got to call the... You have got to call the External Affairs Mister. Sir, you meet the... Sir. You have got to call the External Affairs Mister. Sir, you meet the... Sir. You have got to call the External Affairs Mister. Sir, you meet the... Sir. You have got to call the External Affairs Mister.
Not a word there from Canadian High Commissioner to India. Cameron McKay was summoned by the Ministry of External Affairs and found about the fact that action has been taken against a diplomat. Okay, in fact, we are shifting focus right now to a big story that we are breaking at this hour. Let's go straight to that. Women's Reservation Bill likely to be tabled today itself. That's the big story that we're getting at this hour today in fact. When the Parliament convenes again, we will have the Women's Reservation Bill tabled. Pallavi Saha tracking all of those developments. Pallavi, the government is not delaying this one wee bit and the bill is to be tabled today.
That's right, what we're hearing from our sources is that that bill will in fact be tabled and introduced in the Lok Sabha today. And it is expected that the Law and Justice Minister Arjun Ram Meagwal will in fact be introducing that bill. The discussion on the bill will start tomorrow. But today of course, we're going to see an introduction to that bill also like I've been saying earlier. There could be a reference to of course this historic decision taken by the Cabinet yesterday in the Prime Minister's speech today in the new building. There could be a, you know, a reference to that. But what we are being told by our sources is that that bill, the Women's Reservation Bill, approved by the Cabinet last evening will be tabled, will be introduced in the Lok Sabha first today by the Law and Justice Minister Arjun Ram Meagwal. But also, very interestingly, what our sources are telling us that the government has another surprise update that is likely to come up anytime. What that is of course is going to be very interesting to find out. But yes, the government is keeping the specials actually, tricky specials as we can see.
Yes, you know, Pallavi, one more question from you because this was in fact the Cabinet meeting yesterday in which all of you were telling us about the possibility of this being cleared yesterday. Talk to us if at all, I know a little premature at this point in time now, but at all, if you picked up anything about the contents of the draft bill, how different is it from the last time around when the bill lapsed?
We don't have the details as yet, we've not seen the bill at the moment. It hasn't been shared at the moment, but likely to be discussing earlier. Because the Cabinet sat down and approved a bill, we expect that there are some changes that may have been made by the Mayan Modi government in the two thousand eight draft of the bill, which was introduced by the U P A in the Rajya Sabha pass, which then of course, because it couldn't be taken up for consideration in the Lok Sabha, it lapsed at that point of time. Of course, technically, that is how you'd say it, but for the fact that it was taken up by the Cabinet yesterday is a hint enough to us that this version of the bill is different from the U P A version, which is why it needed Cabinet approval before coming to Parliament.
Interesting details emerging as far as that bill is concerned. It's to be tabled today, but Pallavi Saha has confirmed for us, the law minister to table the Women's Reservation Bill. Pallavi, be with us. I'm also in fact going to go across to Preeti Chawari, who is getting us more details. Preeti, you know, what's going to be interesting to see what the draft provisions are and what finally is going to be the take of members of the opposition. In fact, we are going straight to the proceedings of the House right now. Let's take a look.
उन्हें वाला है, उसका आगाज कुछ ही पलों में, जब एक साथ मिलकर, सामोहिकता के साथ, पार्टी लाइन से ऊपर उठकर, एक स्वर में भारत को विकसित राष्ट्र बनाने का संकल्प, दो हजार सेनटालीस तक सभी लेंगे और इस संकल्प को लेकर, नई आशाओं को लेकर, नई उम्मीदों को लेकर, नई विश्वास को लेकर, नए संसद भवन की ओर प्रस्थान करेंगे, तो यह पल इन मायनों में बेहद ऐतिहासिक हो जाता है।
बिल्कुल। तो यह सेंट्रल हॉल, इतिहास के पन्नों में, इस कार्यक्रम के बाद दर्ज हो जाएगा, जब संसद की नई इमारत, नए भवन की तरफ हम चलेंगे और कार्रवाई संसद की वहां से शुरू होगी। तो आज, इतिहास के पन्नों में दर्ज होने वाला है, यह कार्यक्रम भी, यह समारोह भी, जब तमाम जो सांसद हैं लोकसभा और राज्यसभा के, वो इस सेंट्रल हॉल में आखरी बार इकठ्ठा हो रहे हैं और आज से एक नई रहा, नए जोश, नए उमंग, नए विजन के साथ, नई इमारत की तरफ, संसद के नए भवन की तरफ बढ़ा जाएगा। अगर इस सेंट्रल हॉल के मुख्य, मैं कहूं जो ऐसे मौके रहे हैं, वो तमाम रहे हैं, कई ऐतिहासिक मौकों का गवाह यह सेंट्रल हॉल रहा है, जो कांस्टिट्यूटियन असम्बली थी, उसकी तमाम बैठ के इसी सेंट्रल हॉल में हुई है।
These visuals coming in from central hall, you know, iconic at that, these images will go down in the annals of Indian parliamentary history and what you're seeing on your television screen viewers. This is the final time that the building right behind me or what you see, these images that you see right now on your television screen is where any business or any convention or any special meeting is being conducted. This was after the photo opportunity of both houses where five forty-three MPs of the Lok Sabha, two fifty of the Rajya Sabha convened to take, gather to take that final picture and these images emanating from the old parliament because today is the transition from the old to the new. This is the central hall. It's iconic in terms of just what India's politics has been, just what India's decision-making body has been. And like I said, it will go down into the annals of Indian political history. This moment would possibly give goosebumps to a lot of people out there, especially the parliamentarians. For them, they have known this building, it's a temple of democracy and now that switch over or the transition will happen. You know, this is also where the joint session is concerned. You know, we're going to talk about the Women's Reservation Bill later. But away from that, on the second day of the special joint session will be the first day which will mark proceedings and business to be conducted in the new parliament. These visuals coming in from the central hall, you see Prime Minister Modi there, you walking in, interacting, lots of selfies being clicked and, you know, and understandably why the selfies are being clicked because for these parliamentarians, this has been iconic. This is what possibly every politician has dreamt of, you know, to walk and be a member of the parliament. What many journalists have dreamt of, to come full circle in terms of the right of passage of be, of arriving as a journalist who covers politics. But these visuals iconic and for the parliamentarians, the five forty-three Lok Sabha MPs, the two fifty Rajya Sabha MPs, this is something which will be very dear to them. Selfies being taken, the image or the photo opportunity of the picture of the session from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four was taken earlier this time around. And it was taken in the old Parliament building to mark the transition. And you know, that picture, if many of our viewers, you know, would want to know, for an MP, you know, that picture is like an heirloom of sorts. They put it on their walls where you go and meet them in their offices. It's something they'll pass on to their children as well. So that picture was iconic. It also marks the twenty nineteen to the twenty twenty-four session of the Parliament and now the switch over will happen. You know, these are emotional images, they are nostalgic in their own right. It marks a huge transition where India's, the journey of the Indian Parliament is concerned. Sombra at that, it's, you know, letting go of the old, embracing the new. A mark of abject respect, abject surrender to what is the temple of democracy. And understandably, here one can see as the Prime Minister thanking, you know, all the parliamentarians there with folded hands in a namaste and walking there. You can see the sense of, like I said, nostalgia, pride in what has been the biggest decision-making body. But I want to cut across right now to my colleague Pallavi Saha, who's also joining us. Pallavi, it's, it's a somber moment, it's deeply nostalgic. It comes in after that picture which was taken of the MPs of both houses there. And you know, the Prime Minister of course soaking in the moment, interacting with the Member of Parliaments from both the Treasury benches and the opposition. You know, there's a deep sense of nostalgia, melancholy maybe, but letting go of the old, embracing the new, getting ready to do that.
That's right, in fact, Preeti, those images that are coming in from the central hall right now, we're looking at those images where the Prime Minister is of course interacting with the MPs, the senior parliamentarians who seated at the front, having a longish word right now with Rajya Sabha Member of Parliament and Vice President J P Nada. Earlier, we saw him have exchanged a couple of words with Mrs. Sonia Gandhi as well. Mrs. Sonia Gandhi has seated on one bench. And now of course, as the Prime Minister awaits the start of the function, he's just standing and having a chat with of course Dr. Haribansh, who is from the Rajya Sabha, J P Nada and Rajna Singh, who is of course a deputy leader in the Lok Sabha Defense Minister. They're all seated in one bench and because the Prime Minister is waiting of course for the arrival of the other dignitaries, including Vice President and Chairman of the Rajya Sabha, J P Dankar, he has stopped and he is having a conversation with these leaders. Speaker in fact has just arrived Lok Sabha, Om Birla has just entered the central hall and Members of Parliament have stood up to of course...
Pallavi, we seem to have, you know, lost your line there. We're going to try and connect back to Pallavi, of course, who's right now inside the central hall. You know, the central hall has a lot of meaning where parliamentarians are concerned, where the press is concerned, a lot of side business, a lot of jibes, a lot of camaraderie. All of that takes place in the central hall of the Parliament. You have the Prime Minister there speaking with Om Birla, there's Rajna Singh, there's Mr. J P Nada, all of them, you know, in conversation. And okay, let's cut across to Pallavi, right back with us. You know, Pallavi, you know, give us a sense of what is the true meaning or what has been, you know, the true meaning of the central hall. Because of course, a lot of, you know, the formal business being conducted inside both houses, but central hall has also been a place of, you know, camaraderie, you know, jokes where parliamentarians are concerned. Give us a sense because somewhere down the line, you know, these images are of course iconic. You have the images Pallavi coming in of the Vice President, Jagdeep Dankar with folded hands, you know, passing through with all the MPs there standing by.
That's right, the Vice President, Chairman of the Rajya Sabha has just arrived in the central hall. Speaking of the central hall, this is one of the components, if you may, of the old building, Preeti, that everyone, parliamentarians included, media of course, will miss as far as the new Parliament building is concerned because there is no central hall over there. This is of course where, you know, several joint sessions of both houses of Parliament have been seen. Now of course, everyone's standing up for the national anthem.
All right, the national anthem right now at the central hall. This is also the place where joint sessions of the Parliament take place. But everyone's standing up, it's a somber moment for you as it needs to be soaked in. You know, it needs to be reflected on with a deep sense of nostalgia, possibly melancholy and also to understand that, you know, change is the only constant and you have to move on from the old and embrace the new. But these visuals coming in right now from the central hall, possibly marking the final chapter of the Parliament being used as an official building, the old building, where it of course now turns into a museum. But iconic visuals, you know, these visuals will be recorded in the annals of Indian Parliament history of what we are seeing on our television screen. And from here, the MPs, the Prime Minister himself would be walking a brisk quick. Let's listen in, let's dip it.
आप सभी को नमस्कार। I am feeling proud privilege to be the part of this historic occasion where we have assembled in this iconic central hall for the celebration of our seventy-five years of the parliamentary democratic journey and shifting to the new Parliament building. First of all, I welcome Honorable Vice President of India and the Chairman of Rajya Sabha, Sri Jagdeep Dhankarji, Dhankarji, to gracing this momentous occasion. I welcome the most popular, dynamic Honorable Prime Minister, Sri Narendra Modiji, who has been real force behind giving us the new temple of democracy in the shape of new state of art Parliament House building, which is emerging as a symbol of Atmanirban Bharat. I also welcome Honorable Speaker, Sri Om Birlaji, Deputy Chairman Rajya Sabha, Sri Haribanshji, Leader of the Rajya Sabha, Sri Piyush Goelji, Leader of the Opposition Rajya Sabha, Sri Malikarjun Khargaji, Leader of the largest opposition party in the Lok Sabha, Sri Adirandam Chowdhuryji. All my colleague ministers, other senior leaders, fellow MPs from the both the houses of the Parliament to this function which has been organized to commemorate the last sitting of the both the house held yesterday in the respective chambers. Today onwards, our two houses of the Parliament shall have their sittings in the new Parliament House building. We all know that this central hall has witnessed transfer of power from Britain to Bharat. The formation and adoption of our constitution by the Constituent Assembly has been host to some very important occasions like rollout of GST, one tax, one nation, a finest example of cooperative federalism in our parliamentary democracy. There are, there were three joint sittings of the both the houses of the Parliament for resolving the deadlocks under the Article hundred and eight, that is the dowry production, the dowry prohibition bill nineteen fifty-nine, the Banking Service Commission repeal bill nineteen seventy-eight, Prevention of Terrorism Bill two thousand two. You all know that Lok Sabha and Rajya Sabha were sitting in this building since thirteenth May nineteen fifty-two. Along with all my fellow members of the Parliament and other stakeholders of this Parliament, I am very happy and enthusiastic about the functions of the two houses of the Parliament. Henceforth, from the new building, which is the symbol of new and emerging Bharat, paving the way for the developed nation as envisaged by Prime Minister by twenty forty-seven. At the end, I would like to say that our journey so far is marked by excellent achievements, memorable experience, difficult challenges, remarkable milestones. As you go ahead, let us learn from our previous experiences so far and reaffirm our commitment to our historic democratic values and tirelessly work for the betterment of the person last in the queue. Jai Hind.
बहुत-बहुत धन्यवाद मानवर। अब संबोधन हेतु, मैं अमंत्रित करना चाहूंगी लोकसभा में कार्यकाल की दृष्टि से वरिष्ठतम वर्तमान संसद सदस्य श्रीमदी मेनका गांधी जी को।
Honorable Vice President, Chairman of Rajya Sabha, Honorable Speaker, Honorable Prime Minister, Ministers and esteemed colleagues of this distinguished House. Actually, I'm as surprised to be here as you are to see me. This is a historic day today. I am proud to be part of this historical moment when a government under the leadership of Prime Minister Sri Narendra Modiji has undertaken to repair the deep-rooted... has undertaken to repair the deep-rooted asymmetry and to give an equal share in India's future to all of us women. I am grateful for the honor. I am grateful for the honor you have given me of speaking about my years in parliament. We are going to a new building and hopefully this grand edifice will reflect the aspirations of a new Bharat. Today, I have been entrusted with the responsibility of addressing this esteemed assembly as the most senior member, most senior parliamentarian in the Lok Sabha. I entered parliament at the age of 32, nine years after the death of my husband. My debut was as Minister for Environment. Today, 35 years later, I have spent most of my adult life in this institution and I have seen seven prime ministers and the shaping of grand history. It, it has been an arduous, rocky road. I had several terms as an independent member and finally joined the Bharatiya Janata Party under Sri Atalbihari Vajpayeeji's leadership in 2004. Since then, I have remained a proud member of the BJP as well of this august House. Being a member of parliament is an immense responsibility as it entails safeguarding the trust of lax voters who elect us to be their voice. You are given power, but this power must always be used for their good. The job demands unwavering commitment, moral rectitude and courage. Basically, it demands great love for your country and infinite kindness towards all. Each one of us gets this opportunity to make a difference, provided we sublimate our own ambitions and see ourselves only as vessels or bridges or protectors of all the beings that need us, the last person in India who believes himself forgotten, people who cannot navigate for themselves and appoint us as their helmsman. I have tried to make the most of every minute to bring about change wherever I am, whether as Environment Minister, when many institutions and laws that safeguard us were passed, as Social Justice Minister setting up Alimko, that which now looks after all the disabled in the country, Childline, which was regarded internationally as the best institution for looking after street children, stopping child labour in the carpet industry. You can change things wherever you are. For instance, in the opposition as a BJP member, as chairperson of the often ignored assurances committee, we changed the way people were experimented on by pharmaceutical companies. They were not paid or even asked before becoming guinea pigs. This was changed by us. During Atalji's time, we brought in the vital red and green dot on foods, allowing people to know whether they were eating vegetarian, non-vegetarian food. We repaired an institutional deception by food companies. No service, no job is too small that it should not be taken seriously. My happiest moment was being given the responsibility by the Prime Minister who coined the phrase, beti bachao, beti padha. Within two years, we changed the thought of the country, the entire thought of the country. And the statistics show that it is a lasting change. From 130 women per thousand, a shameful statistic, it rose to 950. Crowds of girls were saved. Not only that, it is now seen as a shame and a crime to do away with girl children, whether in the womb or newly born. Now that we are going into a new building, a new phase, I want to tell all the young people here that politics is never fulfilling unless you have a grand passion and a commitment outside it, unless a fire of curiosity burns within you. No service is too small in the service of Mother India. What I have learnt is that each constituency is your family. Within my family, there are million microcosms of individual families. Each of them depend on us. We are a part of their lives as they are of ours. I have seen my primary duty to look after each family that has placed itself in my care by electing me, by seeing me as one of their own. In this matter, I wish to say that the Prime Minister has seen beyond people as a statistic and has meticulously seen to the needs of each individual family. Opening, opening bank accounts, giving dignity in the form of toilets, home water taps, building homes for the poor, gas cylinders, giving young people loans, skilling them, protecting them through the largest pandemic in history, saying that no one remained hungry. Before I end, I would like to tell you a few things that I have learnt in my long journey so far. Never give up. There are times in all our lives where the world sits heavy on our shoulders and there doesn't seem any path ahead. It will take courage, determination and a commitment to something larger than ourselves to forge ahead. Have faith in the goodness of your fellow man, quieten your mind and soldier on. Believe in yourself. You are an instrument of goodness. If you fight for good, you will always be protected. Use the pain that we all have in our hearts to make yourself a better human being, not to embitter you. Use the pain in your heart to see the pain in the hearts of millions of beings around you and dedicate your life to them. I want to speak to all the women here. The world is still an unequal place and we as women need to be the greatest champions of and for each other. We need to support and protect each other, especially young women across the social spectrum who lead a marginalized existence so that they have the ability to forge their own destinies. There is no greater power in the world than the power of empathy and kindness and this transforms the life of someone weaker than you. Kindness serves as its own reward. The greatest bank balance that we will ever possess is that of good deeds that we leave in our wake. That is the only legacy that will remain. My faith in God is unwavering. I see him in everyone and everything. I see everything as sacred. I leave you with one thought. We are all part of one divine thread and we are all connected, closer than we can imagine. Let us, irrespective of any differences we may have, wish happiness, protection and on this holy day of Ganesh Chaturthi, a life free of obstacles for us and all our countrymen. Illuminate the lamp of goodness in our hearts. Jai Hind, Jai Bharat.